We will call upon the Select Board, regular meeting Thursday, June 13th, 2013 at 7:00 PM. For the agenda approval, approval of minutes 6, 613, warrants, mail, transfer station supervisory, monthly board meeting, old business, we have personnel, Great Fields kennel agreement. I've got two items that I'd like to add on our cemeteries. Under new business, Rose Marie Pelletier, RE local time exchange and facility use request. Is there anything that would be on the board to be added? With that, I'll take a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minute 6, 613.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Warrants. Payroll 6, 913 to 6, 1413, in the amount of $7,013.86. Accounts payable, in the amount of $15,036.49. Waste water, TAM under waste management, and diesel fuel are your expensive ones in there. Accounts payable, in the amount of $21,460.06. And this is wastewater treatment fund. Yeah, it's payment, interest payment on which. I would take a motion on the warrants.
Second.
All in favor? Mail. Okay, grant application for $105,309.57. This is contract 1A. We need a motion, then I'll go to the second part.
What is the grant for?
It's our contract with wastewater. Yeah, contract 1A.
Motion.
I have a motion, wait a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before I pass this for signing, there is two places to sign, three. There's an arbitrated certificate grant. Anticipation borrowing, so I guess it's all together as three places to sign.
You're saying all three places?
I did not. I told you to, but I didn't, huh? Here, go ahead, slap me, I don't care.
Ship them off in just the top sheet.
Sorry, I'm here at 7:10.
Yeah, thanks. I'll try to do better on the next one. Here, don't forget to all three places.
Excellent, four, but you missed one.
Yeah, probably did. Okay, contract number five, this is the same thing, grant application note. And it's the sort of contract five, in the amount of $871,566.61. And there are three signatures on that, again.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
All in.
Aye. See, you didn't think I could learn, did you?
No.
Probably not. Feds. Yes. Okay, we're spending some money tonight, folks, but it's other people's that helps. We have from the State Department Agency of Transportation. Name Brian R. Sears and Susan M. Minter.
From the back door towards the top.
Titled Deputy Secretary of Transportation. And this is on our bridge, subject matter of this grant is agreement of financial assistance to the municipality under 19 VSA 306E for maintaining, including actions to extended life expectancy and construction of bridges, converts, et cetera, et cetera. And this will be on our bridge in Powell Village. Maximum amount consideration of the scope work provided by the grantee, the state agrees to pay grantee in accordance with the payment provided provisions specified in attachment B, a sum not to exceed $120,802.50. What is your pleasure?
I'm just saying, I ain't putting it up the bed.
Yeah. Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Hopefully the bed's coming under there.
613, right. Okay. And last but not least, we have a report on the panel landfill water quality results. Breasing through these quite a few pages, they said there's been slight improvement in most of the action out there. There's only one particular item that was a little bit higher than average, and they don't believe it was coming from the landfill itself, so our reports are staying pretty level on this and a little bit better. With that concludes our mail, folks. Okay, if there's no questions on the mail, our transfer station supervisor.
Yeah.
The OJ quarter.
What?
The OJ quarter here.
First of all, I don't want anybody going to meet for this, whatever. It's not at all. I'm gonna read material that will lead into the meeting that we had in Manchester. Basically, it's a summary of Act 148, which is the legislation to reduce waste and landfills.
The waste in the landfills, does that include the stuff that's gonna be on the side of the roads now instead?
They're hoping to avoid that. Basically, we don't wanna read all this. I mean, Act 148, that's the biggest thing since the state started recycling and whatnot. They were able to divert materials going into the landfill by 30, 36 percent, and it's kinda stagnated right there. So they looked at all that, and their goal was to significantly improve that. And they've laid out timelines and whatnot in this Act 148. So basically, on the 22nd, we met in Manchester, and Kathy Jamison from the A and R, Mike Batchery from BCRZ, his boss Jim Sullivan from BCRZ, Steve Bendix, Town of Sunderland, Keith Flyers from Arlington, myself from Powell, Marty Becker from Shazberry, Rob Gotti from Dorset, and John O'Keefe from Manchester. And essentially, what they're trying to do is figure out how to put together a plan of attack on adopting all the provisions in 148. They want to, you don't really know if it's gonna be BCRZ's role to put this together, or whether they should hire another firm, or whatever. They met, Stewart Heard in the town of Bennington, and they're gonna bring in a number of towns to see what common ground everybody has to help reduce redundancy. Like, right now, when you do hazardous household waste, Tom does their thing, well, we're associated with Shazberry, but you got all these different towns that are spending money, and they're hoping to look at those things and reduce that expenditure for towns and whatnot. The big thing is trying to put together a plan and involve as many towns as possible. Basically, Kathy Stacy said the state plan should be completed by November of 2013, and the towns in solid waste, it should have 12 months to complete a plan that complies with the state plan. Like I say, it's it's trying to get everything together and understand this, another aspect of this right now, this is what they call a SWIP, Solid Waste Implementation Plan that we're in now with the other eight towns. And that may be converted to a materials management, because they feel that there's other valuable materials going in the waste stream right now. So part of this, if they can get this together, and the BCRZ is playing a key role in trying to get this together, evaluate where each town is now based on the timeline, and, because they all may not be the same as far as the recyclables that they manage right now, so town Powell will know where it is compared to Shazberry and all the rest of the towns. So it's gonna take some doing, they're gonna set up, or try to set up another meeting in the first part of July, so that we can meet with the town bank and then go over all this and see where we do have common ground and see where we can cut out redundancy, I guess.
What does he mean by food residuals?
Number one, this is a summary, if you look at Act 148, it's quite large. Actually, a lot of food that people throw away, they would like to have it composted. Obviously, they're, on the back page of the first page, I think, where they've got where it says phase in organics diversion, like 2014, they're going after the big, like your large grocery stores, cafeterias, things like that. And then they're gonna work their way down the chain because of the number of tons per year, down to households. Some of the, some of the plan is not necessarily composted, like some of your food chains, giving it to food pantries and things like that. And maybe some in your other org, cafeterias and whatnot. And, but you gotta, you gotta realize, like, if you were in Burlington, which is a much larger city than where we're at, things might work there, like giving it to food pantries and whatnot, perhaps here it wouldn't. So, but basically, they wanna reduce food waste. I have talked to Tam, because he did a survey on how many people would be interested in the service. And I've talked to some people over at Transfer Station, and some of them don't want, even though they're in a rural area, don't wanna compost because of the bears and whatnot. So they might be interested in utilizing that service if we had it over there.
That makes sense. If that's the law, you can't speed the beers after a certain time of year, and they
Service, it leaves when they're hungry.
Most of these meetings have, are they in Bennington or Rutland or?
This particular meeting was in Manchester. And usually, when you meet with somebody from the state, you gotta go to Ohio. Kathy Stacy came down from the A and R, to Manchester, and to meet and try to give us an update on Act 148, and where we should be headed. Another, I can give you this, this is a law that they passed, the government signed it fairly recently, and this is on paint, which I think 2014 is going to go into effect. This is essentially a lot like the rest of the bulbs. I don't know which, have you worn this one?
Not a paint, no. Glass of bulbs, yes.
Basically, the manufacturers or the retailers may be paying a little more for your paint, but they'll be able to set up assistance to take the paint back.
What about the containers they're in?
Paint containers?
Yes.
I don't know, there again, they pass these, and it looks simple, but the devil's always in the details.
Because I was gonna say, most of your paints, at the price of paint, I don't see a lot of people taking their paints back to the distributor. They'll keep it on a shelf and use it, but when the paint can's empty?
Well, empty paint can, okay, right now, an empty, dry paint can will go in the trash.
Right. And I wonder if that'll change?
That, I'm not sure of.
Then we'll have to send your house out to China to get a paint.
Because in the automotive world, people aren't gonna take their paints back if they didn't use a half a pint, not when they cost what they cost.
And I wasn't thinking so much to do automotive, because we seldom get that, like on hazardous household waste, and a lot of people bring unfortunate latex paint, which they don't accept on hazardous household waste. But any of your other paints, if required, they don't, oil-based or whatever, they accept. The automotive industry, and I didn't see where that specifically addressed that on the segment.
It is certainly a large can of worms.
Yeah.
Yeah, just opening.
There are states and boroughs that have already, are ahead of us on some of this. I didn't bring that information with me, it's not just one, it's still. I don't know if they have already shut down, I think it's Morrisville or something, if not, they're in the process of doing that. And then they have one other landfill. So it's gonna take some time to phase all this in. And I don't know what kind of incentives we discussed that there, what kind of incentive the state is gonna put forth to help implement all this. So when you first see, it's a lot to get your hands around, and that's why the BCRZ's trying to coordinate everything and figure out the best direction for everybody to go. I do the timeline, 2015, like on the first one, van disbulbs and solid waste, and they recycle it by 2015, I think, and that's the other thing they'll do, is look at where everybody's at. Leaf and yard residues, clean wood waste, we handle that now, that's by 2016, they pretty much handle it. The food residues is gonna be the next big one.
No leftovers.
That shouldn't be that large in this area, though, because we don't have big contributors.
Well, your school, Palatine here, would be one of them.
Yeah, and I don't know, I haven't personally talked to the school, and a lot of this new stuff is coming out, there needs to be education put out there, it's surprising, and a lot of things that people don't know that's going on. It's hard to imagine in one sense, but if you look before they started recycling, and back then, you'd say, well, nobody's gonna do this, but you look now, and it's being done, so how much resistance, how well the food thing is gonna work out? I did, I did ask them, because obviously, they can't do the electronic waste, and so their numbers are 30, 36 percent, where they were stagnated, I said, well, things gotta be improving sometimes if they pass that and whatnot. But she said it was, that was only like 1 percent, 1 and 1/2 percent of the waste stream. They said the biggest chunk of the waste stream was in food waste, right now.
Well, yeah, you have to eat three meals a day, or chew it anyway, and multiply that, tons of population.
You must get 4 or 5, ain't ya?
No.
Be nice now, guys.
Want to continue?
You're on here, don't forget.
So I don't know, Richard, you know, like with the My vision is
I got 10 years, or 12, 14 years on the road.
If it's terribly costly, the transfer station, that people will be able to bring it there, and we can have somebody come and pick it up there. Because everything we can take there is a lot more convenient for people, and it takes frustration away. But I don't know if that is gonna happen or not.
It's definitely gonna be interesting. And I think you're right with education, you know, educating people on it, and, I mean, if this is a law, people are gonna have to follow it, but, you know, looking over this quickly, it looks like they're going, starting with the manufacturer on down. And the way it looks to me, if you're gonna sell paint, you're gonna have to be part of this, or you're not gonna sell paint. You know, so and when is this gonna be enacted?
The, the paint?
Yeah, July 1st, 2014, the plan implementation begins, so, I mean, that's, that's a year away, you know, there's gonna be, this is the first I've heard of it, but that doesn't mean anything either.
I don't know how much more is coming down.
Well, it seems to me, it can only go so far, and then everything's gonna come to a screeching halt.
All I can do, Dale, is try to do my best to make this run as smooth as possible.
I'm really surprised that nobody's come up with anything to to harden or make solid your leftover paint, as something that you can pour
You can, with latex.
With latex.
One of your competitors
Besides leaving the top off and just letting it harden?
I was sold by, I'm a pretty good seller, so one of your competitors sells an additive you can put in latex paint.
I researched that a little bit. Because What's the advantage to that, though, you know, I guess, once it's hardened up, it's good to go?
I think their view right now, of course, and it's changing about paint, they don't want it in the landfills, right now, because they don't have another way to divert it. If you have, because you can get latex in five gallon gallons, you throw it in a dumpster, and if that's busted open going down the road, it's gonna be running out. So at least now, if it's solidified, it's stable, and then, I don't know how, I don't think it's anywhere near as harmful to the environment as your, like your oil, and your lacquer thinners, and et cetera, that's why those, they won't accept in the trash.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
I don't quite put on this already, so.
Okay. I'm gonna be off next week.
Thank you very much, Al.
That's up, thank you.
If you read that over, and you got more questions about things, I mean, there's a lot there, I
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, next on our list is the personnel. Is this something that should be executive session?
Yes, Barbara's here to speak to the board.
Is this something you would like in executive session? We've got two small things ahead. Could we just, Barbara, do you have a problem if we switch you down so we don't have to and we could throw these other two things in? All right, we'll put the personnel down onto the bottom, and we'll go into Great Fields Kennel Agreement. Everybody had a chance to, I think that's up there somewhere, isn't it, like in front of you?
That's hers, that's in the school.
I think it's underneath there. Everybody's had a chance to look at that, that's an agreement with Great Fields, it's their hours of operations, their cost, and so on, we've had that before, this is just a reminder and a signature phase.
Is this where the town holds the animals?
Yes, our town ECO would be taking the dogs there, and they would be held there for five days.
Well, it's pretty straightforward, it's pretty simple, I think. And it does give us an avenue.
I've had animals kept there in the
I think it makes, I think it makes a lot of sense, and I think it'd be a useful tool for our animal control officer also.
If everybody's had a chance to look at that, what is your pleasure?
Motion, son.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Signature. I need one signature.
Oh, we're still on that, I got an email. It says, "The clinic, emergency animal sheltering at the Berry City Civic Center Auditorium. Saturday, August tenth, eight thirty AM to three thirty PM, at three. As for emergency animal sheltering."
Where is it?
Berry.
Berry, per minute? Date again, August?
August tenth, eight thirty AM to three thirty PM. Free training on emergency animal sheltering in order to continue to build their volunteer ranks.
If nothing else, if nothing else, our ACO should be informed of that particular-
Could you possibly print that out and have a few copies for us?
Yeah, I could print it out home, I could print it out here, I could print it out home.
Yeah, and make sure Linda's got one so we can get it to our ACO also, so she's aware of it. I think that would be a- Okay. Next is quick, we had a letter a week ago about our cemeteries, flags and flowers. They were not done on Memorial Day. Trying to step up and change that, so this doesn't happen again. What I would like to bring before the board is, we have, every two years, we contract, or have been two-year contracting with Lawn Moring Services to do our cemeteries. In that included is a cleanup in the spring, usually a fall cleanup. I don't think it would be outstanding to have them in their spring cleanup install flags.
When is that spring cleanup taking place?
As soon as they can get in there, when it's good enough to do it, which would be an ideal time to throw the flags to.
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking here, if they're gonna do the cleanup April fifteenth, will the flags last till Memorial Day?
God, I'd hope they last all year.
You know. We're talking about flags on poles, and that, okay.
Yes, yes, the main poles, yes. This, we have main poles at these, and we have flower plantings at the poles. We're not planting at each one of the grape sites, it's just the poles, all right.
I will take some of the heat for this, because Linda did order the clips, and I did check today they are in, but I forgot them, so. I will take the heat on the-
It's not so much the heat on that, as it's, they need to be put in.
Yeah.
Put in place.
Yeah.
We've had people who have done it, and for whatever reasons, they didn't do it this time around. It got lost in the shuffle and didn't get done.
Okay.
So we're trying to avoid this from happening. If we contract this with, I mean, it's gonna take, what, ten minutes at the tops for our guys that are working in the cemetery all ready to throw a flag up. I don't believe the charge would be noticeable, and it would be done. That would take care of the flags, in the end of the year, they'd come back. So, one problem secure. So, is the board thinking that's a good idea?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
So we motion it and do it?
I'll make a motion.
Second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the second part of this is flower planting. Again, it has to be done, and hasn't this year. So I went and talked to the seniors, the Pownell Valley seniors, and they have generously donated their time. This Saturday, Peckham's will get the flowers like they always do. They will go down there, they will pick them up, and they will do our cemeteries for them, for us, which I think is very good. Kudos to them, they're very active in many ways, between our votings and different things that they do for us, and this is just one more leg of showing their appreciation and helping us out, so. A big thanks to them, and they are gonna handle that. Whether it'll be a steady diet, I don't know, but it'll be this year.
It'll be done this year.
And that's very appreciative, so this board thanks them.
Maybe next year, we ought to approach them a little earlier, maybe they will-
Well, we'll see how they feel this year about it, you know, let's roll it off, but it was, it's a nice gesture, so. We do appreciate any problem with the board having to do this. Okay.
I have no problem with it.
Okay, if we're all in favor, I don't know if we need a motion on it or not, but we better.
Motion to have the seniors install flowers.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, that business is taken care of. New business, Rosemarie Pelletier on time exchange and facility use request.
Good evening. Free publicity is good, anytime you can get it. I'm here tonight on a twofold purpose. One is to announce the establishment of a not-for-profit that is designed to serve the towns of southwest Vermont, including Pownell. It's an idea that I had brought to the town meeting a few years ago, and it's now on a much broader scope. What it is, is it's time banks or time exchanges are established throughout the country, matter of fact, there are a number of them throughout the world. And their sole purpose is really to build community and to assist people within a neighborhood or a geographical area by facilitating the exchange of services with no money being traded. So the premise is that everybody in a community has something to offer, and our communities become stronger when people sort of take care of each other. And so the idea is, anybody can choose what services they wanna offer their neighbors, and every hour of service you give entitles you to an hour of service from another member. So let me, this is the flyer.
Thank you.
I wanna thank the-
I've still got my-
Communication class, oh, okay, the communication class at the Career Development Center, because they helped us with the logo, the printing, and this particular piece of information is simply how to go to the website and sort of start the process of becoming involved. And I would hope that everybody here would choose to become involved. I have on this little paper here, and it's in the folder, but the people who are viewing this on the television can't see that. So the best way to indicate an interest in being part of this is by going to the website, h four o b e n n at gmail dot com. And the name of the organization, and we just received at the end of last month, our not-for-profit status from the state of Vermont. The name of the company is Hour for Our Community, Bennington Regional Time Exchange Incorporated. And the, so what I, I want to get that word out, we're going to, we're trying to keep the cost low, so that what we've done is, we're using local facilities, instead of having an office where we then do orientation trainings and have a storefront that we have to maintain. We're gonna bring the information to the community. So right now, we have four informational meetings scheduled, if we get your approval tonight, here in Pownell. And two of them are at the library, and those are set for July fifteenth and the twenty-third. And those, the dates will appear on the website, but anybody who goes to this email address and simply says, "I'm interested," would send them the information. So you don't have to write all this down. The other piece that I'm looking for tonight is that we would like to use the elementary school. And I talked with Todd Phillips, and he's very excited about the idea. He's putting information about the organization in the parent newsletter that goes out. But what we'd like to do is host an informational meeting in the elementary school, and we've got two dates set with the elementary school. But in order to do that, we need your permission, because that requires insurance coverage, which we don't have as an organization. So what we're looking for tonight, from you, is both your, hopefully, your support for the organization as a whole, and its ability to build community, but also your permission to use the school as an informational, a place where we can conduct informational meetings. The first two of which would be July tenth and July twenty-fourth.
Do you have any idea, Rosemarie, as to how many people you expect at this meeting, or, you know?
I have, I have no idea, I would love to fill the library, because the whole premise of this, the more people who are involved, the broader the services that are available, and the stronger the community is, so, you know, and it's new to people.
Right.
I don't know if people would get excited about it, and there'll be a large showing, or if it'll be a small showing, and a handful of people will come, and then the word will spread. We'll continue to hold, the orientation meetings are a half hour of just sort of explaining the principle behind this. And then for those people who are interested in becoming part of it, there's a follow-up meeting that shows you the software, sort of the protocols of how to contact people, and what we use is, we use the web to facilitate the interchanges between people. So, you know, for example, I might, because I enjoy gardening, I might weed somebody's garden, you know, and somebody else might take somebody to a doctor's appointment, you know. The nice thing about it is that if I'm doing something for you, you don't have to find something that I want done for me. I can do it for you, and then you can ask, I can ask anybody else in the organization to do something for me in return.
Right.
And every person's hour is treated as of equal value to somebody else's hour, so we don't say, what you just did is more important than what you're about to do.
So it's not a monetary value type thing?
There's no monetary exchange. The only monetary thing involved is there's a twenty-five dollar annual membership, and that supports the software and the other things that, you know, conduct a business, like the phone lines and that kind of stuff. But no, there's no monetary exchange, and because of that, it's not like a barter system, so there's no tax implications of it. So what it is, is it's sort of taking what is a time-honored way of building community, where neighbor helped neighbor, but now we often don't know what our neighbor needs, so this facilitates knowing what somebody needs and can I help.
Rose, the only thing, it has nothing to do with us signing this, time.
Yeah.
You know, six o'clock, seven o'clock.
Tenth and the twenty-fourth.
If somebody, because I forgot my reading glasses.
You need one-twenty-fives?
Okay, now, let's see, one-twenty-five might do, I'm a little older than that. Okay, on the fifth, on the tenth, that would be at the Pownell Elementary School, and that would go from six, six-thirty to eight-thirty. Six-thirty to seven being the orientation part. Then, on the fifteenth, it's at the library at six-thirty. We have a cat TV presentation. On the sixteenth, let's see.
See, it gives a timeframe, because otherwise, it doesn't know if it's day or night.
It's evening, and we recognize that there are times when people who work evening shift won't be able to make it, so. We'll also be running some during the day. Tomorrow, we're setting up a schedule, a meeting with people at the health department in Bennington, and we're gonna set up a schedule of some daytime meetings there. So on the web, this Gmail account will get you onto the mailing list, and then we'll send out whenever we have a meeting scheduled. So we're gonna be scheduling them in Shaffsbury and North Bennington, and Arlington, Bennington, Woodford. So if you can't make any that's scheduled nearby, you can always go to another. We're trying to make it as convenient for people as we can.
Would you please give us the web address again?
The web-
Just turn it right on.
Okay, the web address is, it's called our, H O U R world, okay, dot org. And when you go there, there's a button that you push that says to join, and when you go there, there's a list of ones around the country, and you have to scroll down to get to where it says Vermont, and it will then say Bennington, Hour for Our Community. And that will actually bring you to our being-established webpage, so it's in construction right now. But that will have the information, but the, probably, right now, the way, I check every single day, the Gmail account, and then we'll send people a set of directions, the four steps to actually log on. Thank you.
Rose, suggestion?
Yeah.
Front porch forum?
Yes, I will, yes. And any other suggestions for getting the word out? Because the whole premise is, you know, the more people who do it and are willing to offer whatever they have available, you know, in terms of services. Some people will choose to offer their professional skills, you know, and some people will offer everything but that, you know, it'd be hobbies, interests. I mean, when you, once you go on the website and you see the kinds of things you can check off, that I'm willing to do, I mean, it's significant.
Front porch?
Front porch forums, yeah.
That'd be for that one, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna do some radio programs, we're gonna do cat TV, we'll have some, there was an article in the Kenny Saver this week about establishing the time bank, so we're gonna try to get the word out as much as possible and as continuously as possible, because this is gonna be an ongoing.
So you need our approval just to use the school?
We need your approval to use the school, and for your insurance to cover our use of the school.
The school's approved it, they just need our approval on it, so. If Rose is done, we can go outside with it.
Yeah.
Then I will-
And hope that all of you choose to participate in it.
Take a motion on the time exchange facility, using our facility, the school, or using our insurance, so they can use the school, so.
Make that motion, that we can cover them with insurance when they're at the school.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Point of clarification, because I put on here the two meetings we've set with the school now. With this approval, if we establish other meetings, should I come, submit a request again for it? Yes, okay.
That way we know-
You know, yeah.
Yes, when the meetings.
And they have to keep these insurance, it gets up to date, that one will be expiry, so.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for shifting the agenda.
Okay, anything else before the board at the moment? If not, I will take a motion to go into an executive session on personnel.
Motion to go into executive personnel?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take care, Rose, thanks.